Uh, Councilwoman Becky Garvey. Councilman Daniel Brennan.
President.
Councilman Scott Harjo.
President.
Councilwoman Jenny Workla.
President.
And Mayor Rich Sykes.
President. I'll let the record reflect, we do have a quorum for Tuesday, December 10, 2024. Um, we'll run down to recognizing persons in the audience. Please let me come to maximum of three minutes. Would anybody like to get down and speak? Come on down.
Do you want me to sign you in?
Nope.
All right. Rod Dudley, and I just wanted to make a few comments on the TNR trap, neuter, and release. I know it's a big concern here in town, and I appreciate the letter that Chief Thompson put into the packet. Um, it actually gave me a different perspective of why we can do things and can't do things. But I do appreciate the, um, people that came forward to bring it up, mainly because it is a problem in parts of the town, for sure. And, um, so if rewriting an ordinance or making it workable, doable, then, um, that would prevent, um, things like what happened to me when I was a little kid. When we moved into town, uh, there was a cat that used to get in the garbage cans all the time, and my dad took care of that with that. So, I can't imagine another kid having that trauma. Um, and there really isn't any need if we can just figure out how to do that. Um, let's see here. That, and I forgot to say mayor and council. But anyway, I'm learning, trying to remind myself. And then also Merry Christmas to all you guys, and we'll see you next year.
Merry Christmas.
Anybody else? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Donna Karasco. I, um, I have been taking care of a feral colony of kittens in my, around my neighborhood. I've single-handedly seen, like, the kittens just unneedingly, you know, getting sick and dying. There's one that his eyes were so infected that, you know, he had to be rushed in for emergency surgery to get his eyes removed. And it's just a horrible sight, you know, and just unneeded, you know? We can get them fixed and spayed, and it's just unneeded suffer, suffering of these kittens. This one mama cat had three kittens. One didn't make it. One had to have his eyes, you know, removed. And, um, I had someone that was meeting here with some pictures for you guys, too, but, um, I don't see her here right now. But, but it's just, I've, you know, it's so important to get that help, because I can't afford to do it all. There's so many of them. And there's so many more that need the help. And it's just so overwhelming to, and it's, you know, it's, they fight all the time. They just have so many diseases, you know, and that's not something you want in your neighborhood. And it's all, um, could be taken care of, because they live, they live healthier when they're spayed and neutered. They don't fight. They don't, you know, and it keeps the, the numbers down, because they just, you know, they go off instinct, you know? They just live, and it's not their fault that they can, that they are homeless, you know, and they live like that. So if we can, you know, do something about that, it would make, of so many neighborhoods, so much healthier and happier for all the animals. And then you have pets, too. Like, if, you know, I worry about my, my pets, you know, being around the, the animals that are, you know, sick as well, you know, and what's that going to mean for, you know, your pets as well. So it's, it's a big, it's a very, it's a big situation in the town, so. That's all I got.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Donna, what was your name again? Donna what?
Donna Karasco.
Karasco?
Yes.
You live in the city?
Yep.
Okay.
I live over the near west elementary.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
One, sir. Uh, I'm Don Merriman. Uh, just became a resident officially today. Been here six months. Uh, lived in Boise a long time. Anyway, I saw something about, they were going to talk about TNR tonight. I thought it was going to be on the agenda, but since they're talking about it, I'll come out. Uh, I was involved in one of the biggest TNR programs in the country in Kansas, Manhattan, Kansas. Uh, very similar, have an army base there, but there's also a college, a major college there. What happens in these communities like this, we've got a military base, is you have a lot of animals get abandoned, both dogs and cats. So, anyway, they had a very aggressive TNR program. Um, I personally was involved in saving hundreds of cats, getting them TNR'd and stuff. It, it is very important, because they do interact with pets. Um, there's not as much disease in it as I think people want to make it out to be. Cats aren't that bad of a disease-carrying animal, but especially if you get them TNR'd and stuff. But, um, I don't think we can solve it tonight, but I, I think it's something that should be looked at. Um, the city of Manhattan was involved in it also. Fortunately, the university there is also one of the largest, um, vet schools in the country. So they were involved in it. So we had some extra help there in Manhattan. It's a, it's a bigger community than here. But I, I do think it's something that, if the city can help, you know, we, we have dog parks for dogs, because I've heard a lot of comments, I don't want to help cats. I don't want to waste my money on cats. Well, we spend money on dogs, children, and I don't want to compare children to the, to the dogs and cats. But I mean, it's, you know, the, the, the city has to spend money on this stuff. So, um, I, my wife and I, like I say, we were involved. We saved a lot of cats. A couple of communities we did on our own. Um, I don't know what it needs to be done for the future. I don't want to take more than my three minutes. But, um, I do think that TNR is very important. It, it makes all the animals better, and they've become adoptable, a lot of them. You know, these aren't feral cats. They're actually strays. There's a big difference in those two words. Most of them are stray. They're not feral. And so I think it's something that would be good for the community and would happily be involved in the future.
Thanks, Donna.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate y'all. It's a great community.
Anybody else? Come on down.
I just had some folders for the council members and the mayor. If I can give those to you guys, just with some information on TNR. Would it be okay for me to?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon. I've been trapping, neutering, and releasing for many years here in Mountain Home. When I moved here and bought my house 12 years ago, I knew nothing about feral cats or TNR. I grew up with cats and as an animal lover, but beyond that, I did not even know what feral cats were. When I moved into my house, a lady next door to me was feeding a large colony of cats and many kittens. About a month or so later, she moved out, and the colony made their way to my deck, and I began feeding them. There was no way I was going to let them go hungry, as I am against animal cruelty. I did, however, know that I needed to find a solution to help them and to stop them from having more babies. I didn't know where to start. I called the shelter here and was told, like many others, they were unable to help with ferals and would not be able to assist me. So I reached out to the Idaho Humane Society. Thankfully, I spoke to someone who was very helpful and had told me they had a program to help. At that point, they still helped people outside of Ada County. As of the last time I spoke to them earlier this year, they do not. So I drove in, borrowed two traps, and I trapped early morning and took them in there before work and picked them up after. It took about two years of trapping, fixing, fostering, and taking kittens into rescues who were young enough to tame, but I finally achieved 100% control over my colony. I have also been able to get control over several other colonies here in our community. Some are small, just a few cats, and some have been large, up to 60 cats. I also, up until just recently, ran a TNR program for a nonprofit here, and we had great success. We fixed over 300 ferals and strays in two years. There are many others here in our community who want to help ferals, get them fixed, and do the right thing, but they must be permitted to do so legally. Most of these people cannot afford to get them fixed and do need help from an organization who can financially assist them. I am requesting that these organizations are allowed to continue and be in compliance with the law, as well as individuals like myself. I have been told by two city officials that the ordinances here prohibit TNR, although I am not seeing anything written into the ordinances that specifically address feral or stray cats who have no owner. I am hoping that the city can find a resolution to legalize TNR here and be the kind of town that does what is right for people and pets. I would now like to emphasize the critical importance of trap-neuter return as a humane and effective solution for managing our community's feral cat population. TNR is a proven method that not only improves the well-being of animals, but also helps safeguard our environment, our public health, and local neighborhoods. One is the humane and ethical treatment of animals. TNR provides an ethical approach to addressing the issue of feral cats. Is my time already up?
Go ahead and finish.
I'm sorry. And I gave this part to you, so I will just wait to read that, and you guys can see that in your folder. Um, the alternatives to TNR typically do not work. The alternatives to TNR are trap and remove, usually for euthanasia, a feeding ban, laws, licensing, outlawed pet limits, or you can do nothing. Doing nothing doesn't work because you're doing nothing. Cats will remain at the carrying capacity of the environment. This does not address the government's interest in animal control, public health, killing wildlife, and animal welfare. Trap and remove euthanized doesn't work because there are too many cats and too few animal control officers, caretaker resistance and lack of public support, and the vacuum effect. New cats arrive to take advantage of vacated food and shelter. Why don't we just get rid of them all? Who's going to do that and who's going to pay for it? After decades of trying to remove them, the county, town has an exploding free roaming cat population. Feeding bans don't work because they are unenforceable and caretakers will feed anyways. Cats don't pick up and move away. They remain, find new food sources if necessary, and continue to reproduce. The goal of starving cats to death is inhumane. People say, ban anyone from feeding them, and we won't have a cat problem, but you can't ban or outlaw compassion. Laws regulating cats don't work because licensing, running at large bans, and pet limits are largely intended to regulate owned cats, not community cats. Caretakers do not consider themselves owners. Let's pass a law requiring all cats to be confined. Who's going to break the bad news to the homeless cats that they are not allowed to roam free anymore? Who's going to catch the offenders and who's going to pay for enforcement? Um, I do have some studies I could cite, um, some statistics as far as how well TNR works. There's several programs in our surrounding communities, including Boise, called Operation Community Cats. They pay, they're a nonprofit, and they pay 100% um, for the feral cats to be fixed through their program. Um, this year alone, they fixed 750 outdoor cats. Um, there's multiple other, um, communities in the area that I could tell you about that have TNR programs. Um, I am just hoping that, um, you guys will consider this important matter, and, um, we can move forward on it. Thank you.
And Shannon, if you want to give your, your number or your contact information to Daniel, he can just communicate to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. We're going to run down to conflict of interest. Has any council member received information pertaining to or otherwise had any contact with any person regarding any items of the city council agenda? If so, please set forth nature of contact. Wow. First time hearing none. We'll run to the consent agenda. Uh, council, is there anything on the consent agenda that you'd like some more clarification on? You want to pull? Uh, if not, uh, do I have a motion to approve the, this very large consent agenda? Councilman Brennan?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the question. Uh, Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Workla?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Um, run down to new business. Items removed or were none. We'll run down to two. Um, presentation by Carrie Hill with Panoramic Environmental Incorporated regarding the Snake River Water Rights application. You got a team with you, Carrie?
Yeah, Terri, I'm going to let Terri speak first.
Okay. Chris.
Carrie, I know you got Terri. Is this the other fine gentleman with you?
This is Dylan Lawrence. He's the water rights attorney representing the county.
Yes. Sorry, what was your name?
Dylan Lawrence.
Dylan.
Yep.
We have a presentation to pop up for you.
Keep me on track. So really, we're here to, or waiting for that to load, to kind of give an update on, overview what the county's been doing on water stuff. Um, now everybody's familiar with what, what's been going on, so we'll kind of run through that. And then we have a specific, you know, request related to the Snake River Water Right application.
Do you have anything popped up on the bottom of PowerPoint there?
Yep.
It might be on your side here, Daniel.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry, everybody.
Just not on the bottom of your screen?
Well, it froze all of a sudden, like.
We had IT person here, Daniel. We keep digging on you. There you go.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started, take the pressure off Daniel here. Um, while he's doing that. So really, what, what, what's the county need tonight? And, and, um, do we need city commitment for a project? No. We're not looking for any commitments tonight. We're just looking for kind of continued cooperation and assistance in some of these county projects as we're going forward. And specifically, what, what the county's been doing over the last almost 10 years is, is, uh, they started, they first hired me in about 2015 to look at groundwater possibilities north of Mountain Home. They're looking for ways to improve the water supply for this overall area. Uh, we figured that, we determined that that was infeasible. Then we did a little bit broader study looking at water supply alternatives and, and the water supply on the Mountain Home Plateau. And really what that, um, documented was that there is a, a water deficit, and I think everybody probably knows that water levels are declining, meaning more water's being pumped from the groundwater, from the ground than, than is recharging on an annual basis. As a result, water levels decline. And it's about a, you know, very rough in that report, but we, we estimate about 50% of the water that's pumped out is coming out of storage, meaning that it's not being recharged on an annual basis. And that's, and so as a result, you see, you know, water level declines, particularly on the south side of town here. Um, deep wells are declining one to two feet per year. Seen it at the airbase in Combeute. Uh, approximately 40,000 acre feet per year is the deficit, about half of what's being pumped. So, the concerns with that were is that at some point in the future, there may be a, you know, a, a water delivery call by somebody. You can have somebody with a senior priority water rights say, hey, I'm tired of deepening wells, you know, Idaho Department of Water Resources, you've got to do something about this. I want these junior priority water rights cut off. And the state would be required to take some action. What that action is, it's hard to say. Um, but, uh, as we've probably seen in the papers and on the news in eastern Idaho, they've, they've had quite a bit of, um, strife over groundwater pumping impacts on senior priority water rights, and have had to cut back their groundwater use quite a bit. Um, and what the concern here is for, for the city and for the county is it's, it's, you know, it's the economic stability of the, of the area if you lose some of that water supply. Uh, if, if the city or, or industries or agriculture were, were forced to reduce their pumping by, uh, 50%, then that would be a real big hit. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but that's, that may be the kind of the, the action that would, uh, absent anything else, would be required to get groundwater levels to quit decline. Um, and so in our 2017 report, what we did was we came up with a number of different alternatives that this, that the county could consider for, for new water supplies. And, um, you know, and they, they include kind of the usual thing, recharge with any available water that's available. Um, uh, bringing imported water, in this case from either the South Fork, the Boise River drainage, Anderson Ranch reservoir, or from, um, uh, the Snake River. And, uh, and so the county took that to heart and working with, with the Idaho Water Resource Board, uh, started pursuing some of these, those things. First, they filed applications for water rights from, um, from Canyon Creek for, for aquifer recharge. Excess flows in Canyon Creek during the springtime in good water years, they can, they can recharge the aquifer north of town. Uh, they applied for 200 CFS from the South Fork of the Boise, Boise River at Anderson Ranch. Um, that's essentially a floodwater permit, uh, meaning that, you know, when Anderson is, with water released from Anderson for flood control, that water would be available for the county to pump. They could pump it up to Little Camus Reservoir and then later bring it down the, the Mountain Home Irrigation District canalsis. The third one was from, uh, a 20 CFS application from the Snake River, uh, that they would pump up to this area for, for three uses. One, one is, was aquifer recharge. Second would be supplemental irrigation, uh, for Mountain Home Irrigation District, so that by providing supplemental irrigation district, the idea is you, you eliminate the groundwater pumping and replace it with surface water. It provides the same impact as, as recharge, um, because it offsets that use. And the third one was municipal use. Um, and, uh, that would be municipal use within the city of Mountain Home. And we, we didn't really define it in that application. Um, but we had, you know, the city was, city was in cooperating with us at that time and, and was in favor of that. So, so where we stood, stand on those applications is the Canyon Creek recharge application was, was approved. We constructed facilities, and they've been recharging to the extent that the water's been available for the last five years or so. Uh, South Fork Boise had also got approved. Mayor Sykes was at some of those hearings. Um, and, uh, that it was kind of opposed by a lot of people in the Treasure Valley, and we got that one through. Uh, and, uh, the county has been, uh, working towards design on that system. The third one for the Snake River, we got through all the protests. We had Idaho Power and Conservation League and various other entities protesting that, but we've resolved all those protests. And, uh, were then able to, um, uh, you know, get that moving forward, but it stalled. And so it's been, it sat for about five years. The application went in 2017. We got everything resolved in 2018, 19. And, but IDWR did not move it. Well, they're moving it now. And so one of the things they, they asked was for, was additional information. And all, on this, I'll, got the next slide. If you go to the next slide, this is a, a letter from the city back in 2018, when we were first going through these protests, these water rights. And the city, you know, says, "The city of Mountain Home has followed the efforts of Elmore County to obtain water rights to supplement the declining water supplies in various parts of the county. The city firmly supports and encourages the county to continue these efforts." It goes on to talk about how the water would be in the local public interest, um, and how not having that water has, had, had a economic impact to the city, because it's, uh, it's hurt the city's ability to develop new industry. So it says, "Please continue to involve the city in your efforts." This was to the, the county commissioners. "Also rest assured that the city will provide you with continued support and public involvement in your pursuit of additional water supplies." So that's where we were in 2018. I'm assuming we're still there. So we're, we're here just to, to work on, uh, the requests from IDWR on this Snake River application. So, um, next slide. Uh, oh, also, I'll mention that currently, uh, the USGS and IDWR are studying this area. You may or may not be familiar with that. Uh, from 2022 to 2025, they spent about $650,000, um, studying the hydrogeology. They put in some monitoring wells, uh, and developed data to support building an aquifer model. What the aquifer model will allow them to do is to determine what the impacts are of various activities within the, within the regions. If you recharge north of town, who does that benefit? Where does that benefit? If you do other administrative actions, like if you were to curtail junior priority water rights, what's that going to do to, to water levels, that sort of thing? And so that model is in development right now, and it should be out, uh, complete in 2028. It'll be an extension of the Treasure Valley model. So they, they did a, they study in the Treasure Valley, created a model there that they're using now for, for determining impacts of various water use scenarios. It's just going to be an extension of that, because really the aquifer is continuous all the way from the Kuna area here to the, really to the other side of Mountain Home. It kind of runs out before you get to Glensberry.
I'll mention real quick, that figure there is a figure they shared at the Water Resource Board meeting recently, and there's going to be this Zinzer DeCarre report that's cited there. They're going to release at the end of the year. It's going to be like a budget for the area, groundwater budget sort of report. So that should have some good information if going for future grants or anything of any sort. So I'll make sure to pass that along as soon as we see it.
Yeah.
I was worried we weren't going to see anything till 2028, but we will get a little trickle, it sounds like.
Next slide. So where does the city stand? And this is me from the outside looking in, because I don't work for the city, but, you know, you've got a, what I can see is you've got a pretty strong water right portfolio. City's got a lot of water rights. Um, and if water rights were curtailed, I think you could still meet your current demands with the existing water rights, because the average priority date within the Mountain Home Plateau is in the night, is in the early 1970s. And about half of your water rights are senior to that, about half are, are junior. And so even if you got, lost half your water rights due to a curtailment, you'd still have enough to meet your peak day demands under current demand. But you might not have enough for future growth. So it, it should be a concern of the city. Uh, you also have supply challenges. You know, wells are expensive, new wells are. Climbing water table, uh, in some areas, you know, there may be concerns that you're eventually running out of water. It's not, it's not happening tomorrow. It's not happening next year, but, you know, decades down the road. So it should be a concern. And then, you know, the, I found the city's 2019 water facilities planning study, and it notes surface water, you know, it's not going to be part of the city's near-term water supply, but you should consider it long-term. And that's kind of where we're at today is, is, you know, these are the long-term solutions the county's looking for. So.
Next. Just a second, Mayor.
Yeah.
Would, would you prefer if I ask questions in the middle or wait till you're at the end of your presentation?
Go ahead, please, please.
I don't want to ruin your train of thought or anything.
I don't have much of a train of thought, so.
The, the groundwater model on the previous slide, does that, does our aquifer include the new, like, Mayfield area for that major development?
Yes.
It's all part of the same thing?
Yeah. So you, you'll be able to say as if, you know, okay, if, if there's 5,000 acre feet pumped at Mayfield, what impact does it have on water, water in the Mountain Home area, in the Cindercombe Butte area, or in the Boise area? So, yeah.
We, we know for sure that, that that new community is on our same water system essentially, on the aquifer?
Well, yeah, it's, it's all one continuous aquifer from, like I say, the Kuna area, to the other side of Mount, this other side of Mountain Home.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then could I get a little clarification on the next slide about, uh, that, uh, the city's water portfolio does not provide, um, water for growth under a curtailment?
Well, if, so let's just, for example, and this, again, nobody knows how, how a curtailment would ultimately go down if one occurred, but if, if it was determined that, that pumping had to be reduced by 50% in the Mountain Home Plateau, and they did it based on priority dates of water rights, then 50% of the city's water rights could potentially be curtailed.
Okay.
But, but again, as it says, you've got a, you've got a lot of water rights, pretty strong portfolio. And so right now, your max day is met with essentially half of your water rights. So you're, you're in pretty good shape. So you're, you're in pretty good shape right now. It's just the concern would be what could happen in the future.
Some of them are very new water rights and that's what would be cut off.
Yeah, that's typically how that happens. And again, you don't know how a curtailment works. So for example, on the eastern Snake Plain, they didn't cut everybody off. Everybody took a little bit of a hit. The seniors took less of a hit than the juniors, but everybody took a hit. In other, in other instances though, they curtailed just based up straight on priority dates. So a lot of these things become negotiated settlements ultimately and, and the water users within a, an aquifer, you know, band together to come up with whatever works best for them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And really quick, counsel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, for this, this is a pretty important topic, so I'm going to suspend Robert's rules for this, this, this subject if you don't mind. And that way you guys can fire questions away at Dylan, Terry and Kerry.
Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, yeah, fire away. So going forward, so how do, how do we think, you know, Snake River water, the topic of this water right application could benefit the city? Well, approximately 70% of your annual water use is irrigation. And so if you could provide surface water for irrigation of new subdivisions, then you don't have to provide nearly as much groundwater to support those subdivisions. In fact, probably, you know, you, from a new well, you'd probably get five times as many homes off a new well if it was just being used for the indoor potable use, if you could use non-potable surface water for the irrigation source. So that's how I see the, where the, the big bang for the buck could be for the city is, is you, you know, in the, in the Treasure Valley, it's pretty standard if you're within an irrigation district or canal company, you have pressurized irrigation. It's developer funded to go in, so it's not a hit on the municipality or the water company. And, and you have just those separate systems going forward. And you could also retrofit existing subdivisions to do that. We'll see local improvement districts do that over there sometimes just because, you know, the only water bills there are very expensive. And people like to use the less expensive surface water, pressurized surface water for irrigation purposes. Go back to that slide again. Oh, yeah, I think it's an important point. Does the city need, would, if the city was to receive municipal water or surface water for municipal uses, would they be forced to build a treatment plant? Because treatment plants is, you've probably heard, are very, very expensive. And the answer I think is no, because you, you know, municipal irrigation is really that low hanging fruit with surface water. Ultimately, maybe sometime, someday down the road, it would make sense to, to treat surface water for direct municipal use and through the potable system. But I think on a first cut is use it for irrigation and for, for recharge where you don't have to treat it and, and you don't have to incur those high costs for a treatment plant. Next slide. So again, what does county need? Well, we don't need a commitment to participate in a project. We're not looking for the, the city to say, yeah, we're going to pony up money for this because what's this? We're, we're still, we're still early in the game in this water development, surface water development. But we do need your interest and cooperation. And specifically, we need to provide IDWR details on what that potential municipal use could look like with Snake River water. I have ideas what it can, what it could look like, but I can't speak for the city. And so that's what we're here for.
Terry, you're a subject matter expert in this work field. I would assume that you would give us some subject matter expert and say, hey, this is what you should be doing, what I'd like to see the city implement since this is your, I'm not a water subject matter expert by any means. So, because these are questions I have, like the, like the original plan was to get it from the Snake up to the Air Force Base and upsize the pipe, right?
Right.
And then obviously that didn't come to fruition because of timelines and costs and all that. So what's, what's the plan now to get it from the Snake to, to Elmore County or see Mountain Home or Canyon Creek?
Sure, sure. Well, right now that's what the application says and, and we're hoping to just get the application approved with that. But once we got it, I think there, there's better places to bring it. There's, there's closer locations. We could bring it up Highway 51 from the Lubbridge area or from directly south of Mountain Home with a much shorter route, going, going past a lot of big groundwater users that we could, we could potentially supply also to cut groundwater use. So that's, ultimately, I think that's where it's, where it probably would go.
The key of not, they wouldn't be able to, if they're going to get the surface water, we'd have stipulations to not expand. They need to stop pumping the groundwater and use the surface water. They could maintain it. We've seen other communities maintain it as backup, but it wouldn't be for expanding their operations, right?
For, for ag.
Yeah, for ag, yeah.
Yeah, but I was, I was told that if you don't use your water, you lose it, right? So if I'm a farmer and I don't use my 30 acre feet, then IW or the Water Resource Board could take it from me, right? And so you see a lot of farmers taking it to the bond bank and get, what is it, 70 cents on a dollar on it? Or is that what they would do is just send it back to the bond bank or?
Well, there's the water bank, I think is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
No, actually, actually, you know, really it's the beneficial use. As long as they're continuing to, to get the beneficial use of irrigation on their land, their water rights, both their surface water and groundwater rights would be, would remain solid. And so, and it's specifically in the statute that that is a defense, the forfeiture is, is, you know, is conservation. So if you, in this case, you'd be conserving groundwater by, by using this alternative source.
The Air Force Base is doing the exact thing. But they're, you know, the Air Force is keeping their wells and they have the water rights on those wells, yeah, same, same kind of principle.
And just to add a little bit, I mean, yeah, this, you can avoid forfeiture by occasionally using your water rights within the five year period. Because it's a five year period of non-use that results in forfeiture. And then as you've referenced, the Water Supply Bank is, that's a legal mechanism where once you've leased your water rights to the Water Supply Bank, the, the pause button is hit on that five year period. And so they're protected. So there, there are a lot of ways to avoid forfeiture.
And Mayor, going back to your original question is, is you would assume that I could provide that sort of stuff? And you're right. I'd be happy to, to, to work with city staff and come up with a response to that because, you know, obviously I've been thinking about this sort of stuff. And so, yeah, we, we're, we're very, very interested in working with the city, but we want, I want to make sure that the city, city is on board with whatever we say.
Well, to me, if you're bringing water this direction, I think it's liquid gold. And so if you're bringing it this direction, it only is going to help, help everybody. It sounds like you got a plan for the farmers or, or, you know, all the people that do the irrigation and cost, O and M, who up keeps it, who, you know what I mean? Who's going to be taking, like, let's say you did get it going down to Lubbridge Bridge and all that. Who operates it? Who maintains it? What's the cost of that?
Yeah, and that hasn't been determined yet. So we're, we're early enough in the game that, that it really doesn't seem real to people until you get that permit approved. And so once we have the permit, we, I think we'll, we can start to hone in more on the specifics of the project, where we can get funding, where we can get grants, all those sorts of things. But really, a first step, what we're seeing is, is get the permit approved to start to make, make it feel a little more real.
So how, it says right here that you need to show them how it will be distributed for municipal use and then provide a detailed description of the proposed municipal uses of delivery system to allow us to be a part of your application. You know what I mean? So have you guys come up with a formulated plan for that to send back to the Water Resource Board and say, hey, does our plan, council and mayor's good with it or?
No, that's what we really want to work with you on. It can be, it can be somewhat intentionally vague, that, the plan. I mean, I'm serious, is, you know, because we don't have all the details on it, but we could, we can, we can talk in generalities about, once we, once we bring water to the edge of the city or, and, and we have a, you know, the current plan shows it coming in on the west side of town to get to the recharge sites on the north side of the interstate. You're bordering the edge of the city. We could extend water, service into that, into the area, existing subdivisions, new subdivisions for, for pressurized irrigation and the ability of, once you are in the city, then we would also have the ability at some point in the future if we want, if you needed to treat and use it in the municipal system, in the potable system, you could do that too.
Sorry, sorry, Terry. So is that a, where we go to when we have these development meetings with new, new subdivisions, say, hey, you got to put gray pipe in and then obviously normal pipe and then you'll just have a, I would assume the city would have a valve that you're like, okay, we're out of irrigation, so now you're going to do, you know, obviously from our, you know, the potable water.
Well, yeah, but in, in this case, you would, you would assume that you wouldn't come, be out of it, you wouldn't get into a situation where you get out of irrigation water. That's, that really is the beauty of this Snake River water. Historically, it's, it's been available for a 2017 priority water right more than 99% of the days over the last 30 years. The only times where it's, where it's really constrained is, is late March because there's a minimum flow that changes from, at, on April 1st, from 5,600 to 3,900. And a lot of the irrigators on the Snake River start pumping in, in March, drops the flows and start getting close to that 39, or that 5,600 CFS flow. But then on April 1st, it, it, the minimum goes to 3,900 and all of a sudden you've got that big cushion again. So, so really you would, you would assume that if you had Snake River water, it would be available for the full irrigation season every year.
Is the 20 CFS, is that total, total, or is that like daily, that we could take out daily?
20 CFS is a rate. So it's, yeah, it's, it's, you could, in this, the, the application really contemplate pumping 20 CFS 24/7, 365 days a year so that, I mean, because in the wintertime, you could bring it up for, for aquifer recharge.
Uh huh.
Which would support new, new development, new, you know, new groundwater rights. They'd be mitigated by aquifer recharge or keep older water rights still operating. And then in the summer, you could use it for, for irrigation purposes, both municipal or agricultural irrigation.
I think we talk a lot about meeting that 40,000 acre feet deficit, but with this path, the idea really, we need to get beyond and gain and get the industry, you know, build upon that to grow. I think this, that's kind of where this path is going in the Idaho idea.
And the, the county's two applications are the one for the South Fork and the one from Snake River, both, both are really kind of needed. This 20 CFS would provide about 14,000 acre feet per year. And we think that the South Fork one potentially, both with the permit and getting water from the Anderson Dam raise and other rental pool, that sort of sources might provide a similar amount. So, and if we can get this first 20 CFS approved, then it, it does kind of kick the door open for other supplemental irrigation for some of these ag users, which as we all know are the big water users here on the Mountain Home Plateau.
Kind of a follow-up question to the mayor's here. Thanks for the, maybe the two attorneys in the room. But would the city be allowed to mandate for, for future development to say that they have to put in like the piping for a pressurized irrigation system if we don't currently have the system to provide? Like can, can we start future planning, the new development?
Prioritization that you should use surface water over groundwater available?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sorry. I was going to say there's, there are recently adoption of state statutes that actually require developers and cities and counties to maximize irrigation from surface sources before looking to groundwater. That may not be exactly the question you're asking, but that is out there. I mean, that's state law.
I'm curious, like can we, can we force them to put the pipe in if we don't, if we have no ability to provide the service for maybe a couple, handful, I don't know, 10 years down the road? Who knows how long?
So it depends on how, in my opinion, it depends on how attenuated it is. If there is in the plans and we're working towards having the structures to facilitate that and to utilize it, then I think probably it's reasonable. If it's truly speculative, then I would believe that it would be deemed as arbitrary and capricious to push, to push it.
Okay.
But again, it's all the devil in the details there. But if you, if you have a reasonable, it goes under the reasonableness standard. If, if there is, if it's a reasonable regulation based upon sound planning, then I think it's probably fine.
Okay, thanks.
So what's, what's the likelihood of getting the 200 CFS from the Anderson?
Well, we've, we've got the permit approved. The likelihood of, of building it, we've downsized to, on design to 75 to, because the 200 CFS, you know, was obviously more expensive. And we think that with the seven, with a 50 to 75 CFS capacity system coupled with, if we can get storage water from the Anderson Dam raise and, and, and lease storage water, makes a little more sense going forward. And so that project's at 60% design?
In progress.
Pushing, in progress, 60%.
Yeah, or yeah, it's, it's in, going through 60% design. So it's moving forward. It still has the NEPA work to be done.
NEPA, there's just, there's, the electricity, really affectable, pending like a BPA project, a new BPA line to come over for Idaho Power to build a new substation out there. The dam, construction timing with the dam raise, we need the dam raise NEPA done first too. There's a lot of, it's a lot more complicated.
Yeah, so sort of in flipped situations where we have the water right for the South Fork project, but there are more hurdles to it. We don't have the permit yet for the Snake, that's why we're here today. But once we have the permit, that, that has much fewer hurdles and less significant hurdles.
And that 200 CFS is daily and then?
Daily when, when available, which.
Yeah.
So, so I, I think you're, you're getting to a very good point there is, why is it 200 CFS, but it only provides a similar volume as this 20 CFS? Well, it's because it's only available when there's flood control releases, which is maybe 5% of the year.
Right. The, the recharge effort that we were able to accomplish with the county over for the gravel pits, what CFS is that?
That's, that's a 200 CFS permit. And it has, we have capacity for 200 CFS plus the county was able to license an old permit for, I think, 22 CFS. But again, you know, and they're, they're big numbers, but they're kind of a drop in the bucket because of they're, they're not, you know, year round sort of supply. So just for, you know, a few weeks a year.
So if you were to articulate, or I guess for me, since I'm not this guy, I'm not a water guy, the, we're at an 80,000 a year or 80,000 a month, or sorry, 40,000 a month negative, right?
40,000 a year.
A year, okay. So these quintessentially will, will take care of all the issues if we, they were all funded. Let's say the governor and the state of Iowa say, hey, you know what, we're going to give Mountain Home this love and we're going to give them the 200 CFS daily from the Anderson up and over, right? Obviously they're going to pay for the Anderson Dam raise first. And maybe you guys could sweet talk them into doing the piping up to at least, what is it, local?
I, I asked him. He said, he said, get in line. I asked him for money one time.
Well, I, I think he really, he wasn't a huge fan of the, the Snake coming up to the Air Force Base, I don't think in the beginning. But then he came out and did his speech and said, this is what Mountain Home or Idaho looks like with no water, obviously out in the desert, right? But then it was under budget and on time. Is that something that you guys could probably try to, to work with that same company possibly when you're looking at numbers? Because right now we look at numbers, oh, well. Used to be 1.5 million, got swell all day, every day. Then it was 3 million, then it's 6 million. Now we're at what, 7.2, Chris? So we got way smaller. So is that something that, that here in the future that we could work at where it's, we, we work with a company that's obviously a little bit more fiscally responsible? Oh, it's the county or it's the city or it's the state. Well, we're going to, we're going to tack it on to them.
I'll have an answer for that one. You know, you know, everybody struggles with costs and, you know, we'd do a lot of things if, if, if cost was never a consideration. But again, it's kind of, I think we're at the, we're at the baby steps, you know, as far as we want to get this permit, then we refine the plan and, and, and do budgeting. and, and, and do budgeting to see what we can, we can accomplish and how we're gonna get there.
Maybe a workshop with Public Works to kind of hammer out how we'd answer this letter first.
Absolutely.
What's your timeline for the Snake River? Do you have a timeline?
Well, we really don't.
Realistically, five years?
Yeah, because we've been waiting fi, well, we've been waiting five years to get to the point where we are. But we think, you know, with, if we can get this response in, we should be able to get our permit approved soon. These projects, yeah, they, they, they take something like that to, to develop. In this case, if we were coming up the highway, you know, we'd be in the, in the right of way. That simplifies some of the stuff. But it takes, it takes a while to, to come up with funding and figure out who pays for it, all of that sort of stuff. So, yeah, this, these are five to ten-year projects to get to fruition.
So back to your question then, it really wouldn't move us to put it, pressurized irrigation into our subdivisions right now because we're five to ten years out as far as not using non-potable water?
I guess, I guess, you know, I would say, and this is the, the engineer talking, but is, if it, you know, it comes, comes down to, is it speculative or not? If, if the point where you've got a plan and you're moving forward and it looks real, and there's really no obstacles, then I would think it'd behoove the city to require that sort of stuff.
Maybe a developer might see it as a selling point as well. We've talked about it. Buy a home, and eventually you don't have to pay so much in your city bill. Probably the same sell as people, you know, buy solar, so you don't have to pay Idaho Power bill.
Yeah.
So what would, when they do raise it, I, I know I'm asking a lot of questions here. So when they do raise the Anderson Dam, how many, that's all Elmore County water. If they're gonna raise that up, how much do you get, how, how much does the Elmore County get out of that?
You know, that's a good question. Elmore County's been asking that. They've, they've actually protested the, the state's water right application to, you know, to keep their finger on it. They've asked for ten thousand acre feet out of the twenty-nine thousand acre feet of storage availability. There's other, you know, there's other entities that are, that are going after that water as well. But the county's position is they want ten thousand acre feet of that.
Out of twenty-nine thousand, we're only asking for ten? Why not ask for a hundred, a hundred or thousand, or, you know, to ask is to ask, right? The answer's no if you don't ask.
Yeah, well, ten's the, ten thousand's the ask right now, and, and it's, it's a pretty big ask.
Ten thousand is?
It's only twenty-nine total.
Yeah.
And I think nine is for fish, so there's only twenty, really, it's like nineteen acre feet, nineteen thousand acre feet, so.
And those are, the twenty-nine thousand acre feet is set as new water rights? And so?
Yes.
In that, here you have all of these entities coming forward, asking for their slice of the pie.
Right, yeah, all the municipalities in, in the Treasure Valley have requested water, some of the irrigation districts, Mike Ron, you know, everybody wants a piece of the action. And so.
And is it, this is my understanding, so I'm checking to make sure that this is true and correct. Any, any water drawn to fulfill any of this side of the county's projects related to Anderson has to be drawn from above the dam, right? Is it that all water coming out of the, out of the dam is already spoken for, correct?
Kinda. So right now, you know, what, what both the, the dam raise water and the county's permit, which is senior to the dam raise, is, you know, is above the dam, obviously, point diversion. There's a, there's a rule that prohibits diversions for irrigation out of the South Fork through that stretch downstream of the Blue Ribbon Fishing Stretch. There, there could be times in the future where, where both this new storage fills, the county's pumping their water right, and there's still more runoff. I mean, that would be going past, that would be free water that somebody in the Treasure Valley could take in the future, I suppose.
Can, can you help us understand what, piecing some of the puzzle pieces together of all of the different affecting projects in that area, right? Like, we have, we have the dam raise, we have the county's application for the two hundred cubic feet per second. But there's also an energy company operating on a premise that they'll be pumping water out of the lake and into a storage reservoir. Can you speak to any of that and how those either are beneficial to one another, tied to one another, or in conflict?
Only a little, and not because I, really, I'm not that familiar with Cat Creek's proposal. But they're, they're, I believe they're senior to the.
Dylan would be your guy on Cat Creek.
Yeah, I don't know.
Where were you, what was?
Well, anyways, what, well, what I could, can say is, is you do have that, that water right priority process. So first in line is first to right. So, so Elmore County is, you know, if, would be first, then I believe Cat Creek, if it went forward, and then the dam raise.
I think that it's, I think it's Elmore County, the dam raise, the state, and then Cat Creek's there.
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah.
But, but to be clear, I mean, even though that may be the case, and you're the water guy, so correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that when those water rights are in priority, most years, if there's flood flows, all of them will be filled. Because like, when, when there's a high water year, there's a lot of water in, in that drainage. So that there, again, Terry's the water guy, but my understanding is it's unlikely that in a high water year, that there will be some times when one of those water rights is in priority and the others aren't.
And that you couldn't, Cat Creek couldn't be operating, and that would harm the state's water rights or Elmore County's water rights. They couldn't, it would be like a consecutive type operation.
Understood. And in terms of how the projects may relate to each other, I mean, definitely, there's a, there's a big correlation and benefit to the, between the Anderson Ranch and the South, the county's South Fork project, because it's access to storage water in Anderson Ranch that allows the South Fork project to be downsized and to be cheaper. So there's definite, there's a very much a symbiosis there. I mean, there's the, the complicating factors of how do you get both projects constructed and all that. But those two are very much benefit each other. I mean, I know some, you know, a little bit about the Cat Creek project, but that's still, they are so not far along that it's almost pointless to even think about how they affect anything. I mean, they, they just, they have water right proceedings and FERC proceedings that are, are completely on hold.
Gotcha, thank you.
Right back to Snake River.
Snake River's, like I said, the low-hanging fruit. It's a combination of pipeline and it's here.
So is the ask today for continued city support as letters and, in, in form of letters of recommendation? Is the county asking that cities stand side by side in hearings to say, we've, we're coming forward as a community? Like, what, really, what's the ask on the Snake River?
I think maybe the last slide, but if you go to it. But, but that's really, our, our short-term ask is, hey, we just need to be able to provide this IDWR with an answer to this question about how could the city use the water? And as we mentioned, I can help you formulate that answer, but I want the city to be on board with whatever we say. And so that's the short-term ask. But long-term, yeah, it's, we'd like to see the city stand side by side with the county because it's important, you know, the, the city is the biggest part of the county. I mean, in, in most ways, population, et cetera. And so I think they need to be side by side, both for permitting and also for funding and that sort of thing, is to, you know, work together to, to get, get water for this area.
And if I can just add a little coda to that, is that, you know, we're in pretty regular contact with Idaho Water Resource Board and their staff members, because, you know, the Water Resource Board has helped fund a lot of the things that Terry has described. And one thing that, you know, their staff has really emphasized to us is that when, when the board struggles with funding requests for water projects, the biggest thing they struggle with is when there are multiple project proponents who could potentially benefit, but they're not all, all on the same page. And so that was sort of, you know, their, their recommendation to us is, you know, yeah, if you're, if you're going to request that, you know, that the board help fund some of your projects, you know, we want to see the base and the city there with you. So that, that's part of it.
How about the irrigation district and the water, the water district one sixty-one?
Well, the Mountain Home Irrigation District is definitely, I mean, they're critical to all of this, for sure. And they're, I mean, you know, they're part of the reason Mountain Home exists, because all the incidental recharge they provide. A, a water district is more of an instrumentality of IDWR. So that, I, I wouldn't see the, the water district, like, actively participating, but maybe, maybe so, I don't know. But that, that's, because they're more of like a, kind of a semi-regulatory entity, it may or may not happen.
Thanks.
But I did want to mention, thank you for supporting the irrigation district in their recent project. I mean, that already, that's a huge show to the Water Resource Board of look at how everybody's already working together and the contributions everybody's making. That's huge.
So Terry, I think, Scott is right, what's the ask? I think if you can send us your recommendations, I can get that to the council, we can draft a letter of support. I'm sure they'll look at it, and I'm not speaking for them, but then we can get something back to you.
Okay.
Could we have some, could we have a meeting, like?
Absolutely.
Public Works and have a sit-down, brainstorm type?
Yeah. Remember, we got, you, you guys have got to fund it all, and we're poor.
Oh, yeah. At this, at this point, that's, we're, we're, we're working all the county's dime, so, yeah.
As well, I think there's a lot of benefit in maintaining that relationship that's, that's discussed in previous letters of the city and county as, as entities, working side by side and shoulder to shoulder on this. But a lot of that's also really supported in the basis of, of having joint sessions with the county board of commissioners to gain understanding from both your team, from the county, the city's perspective with Public Works, understanding what the city's growth looks like, that could possibly use this in that, like, cone of uncertainty in the future, right? Like, we understand that, you know, gray water, surface irrigation, pressurized irrigation is not a today thing. But the possibility of that is taken off the table if we don't accomplish the permitting first and the necessary steps to start fulfilling the, the jigsaw puzzle ahead of us. I'm super in phase, or in favor, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the council, of having joint sessions between the entities, continued discussions like this. I think this has been very educational, not just for us, but for anybody paying attention in the land of internet and so on. This feeds into big conversations, both city and county relationship-wise. We have our own challenges ahead of us with water and wastewater as well, fulfillment of projects that are in process, and so on. So as we proceed down this avenue of how do you need help in terms of the ask of support for the Snake River project, perhaps this opens the door for discussions on how the community as a whole can start solving some of the big imperative issues that, that face maybe the speci, the city specifically or the county specifically, but maybe there's overlap in the solution, right? I, I for one am very much in favor of that.
This is just one piece of a bigger puzzle, and we're all working on multiple things that, and projects in the Treasure Valley on the Snake River that could change the way the whole water system works throughout the valley, the Boise River system works. So to share that, it would be amazing. And then, you know, how, what, there's probably an ask of how the county can help the city, you know? How can the county help the city with the wastewater? Maybe there's something there. So the funding pool only gets bigger when you have the entities together.
Sure. And the leveraging of these state entities or federal grants, like, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of possibility at the fingertips when you start getting to that. So I think that's probably my soapbox, soapbox ask of today is starting to establish a series, and I, this is like the second or third time I've said this, related to other things this week, so forgive me, mayor and, and staff, but series of, of workshops, joint sessions, where we can get on the same page about documentation, we can get on, on the same page about the intent, what the future looks like. This has been very good today, and I think we could continue that momentum with that kind of, with that kind of meeting series. Whether that's bimonthly or quarterly or what have you, that, that would be my ask of, of the council if, if there's any interest in that.
I agree with Councilman Harje, totally, yep. Mayor, I think this is an important one, too, that if we get to a point where we write a letter, if we could get it with all signatures on, on it, to show the full support, if, if we have the full support.
Yeah, I agree. And what exactly, so you say you need additional info from the city, the mention of a letter of recommendation to support it? Is it also you just need, like, numbers or something from, like, Public Works to, like, I'm, I'm just curious?
Yeah, really, what, really what we need to do is, is tell the Department of Water Resources, if we brought water to the city, how would, how would it be used? With the, you know, it's a, the, the water right application's in the name of the county. How, how are you gonna work with the city to do that? And so we, we need to provide something into their record that shows that, well, you know, for example, an example, the county could provide a tap to the city for, for this non-potable water source. And, you know, they would share, you know, operational costs based on use, something like that, you know? And it just kind of, you know, fill in the blanks for the, for the application.
Nothing binding.
Yes, seems super simple ask, right? Like, this shouldn't be kicked down the road longer than any, I mean, you said. So are you asking for this information in the next two weeks type thing?
Well, yeah, I'd like to meet with, if we could meet with Public Works in the next couple of weeks, that would be great, because it really won't take us any time at all to, to put together a response.
Yeah, I support this a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Easy.
And last question, how much, if we had the twenty acre, twenty CFS, if we pumped that over to the recharge areas, what is the aquafaction? How, how many, how many acre feet goes in there?
You know, it's, twenty CFS is forty acre feet per day.
So it's ten acres, or it's forty acres at ten feet deep?
Forty acre feet per day, it'd be forty acres at one foot deep.
One foot, okay.
And, you know, and, and, you know, you've seen, you've seen those, those gravel pits, they fill up, and they stay full for a while as they're, as they're seeping out, you know, and the water table goes up in that area thirty, forty, fifty feet when those recharge events occur. And so we don't know what the full capacity of those, those recharge pits are, you know? Can they take ten thousand acre feet a year, five thousand? They've got, they've hit close to five thousand back in the Stone-Mageddon year, when there was a lot of runoff, it was forty-five hundred or so, and.
The only reason I ask is for, you know, I got my mind going, like, okay, we take it in the wintertime, we throw it out there. You know what I mean? That's sitting out there and just, you just keep that water pumping.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Or if we had another area, like our, our gravel pit over by the shooting range, you know what I mean? So.
It'd be great to find other areas.
Correct.
Definitely would be, yeah.
And different areas of town as well.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Right now, it's all on the north side.
There are parts of town where, you know, you've got a perched aquifer, which really is a sign that the water can't get, doesn't have any place to go. But other places, yeah, you, they're, you get aquifer.
Well, that's a one done. For me, what the track and the rock, it goes.
That figure that was on there, that, there's a pink line, and that was actually showing their, the perched aquifer, right? They, where the line, the flow lines kind of go a little different, because there's a little perched aquifer, and it's kind of where the city is. So all the studies that are coming out with this application going through, it's, I think it's all just gonna come in at a good time. We're gonna have the data, we're gonna have the data for funding agencies to say, this is how much we can put in, and this is where it's gonna go. And this is the benefit. And then we've got an economic study that's on the cusp, I heard from them today, that talks about how, what's the water worth? And, you know, really shows the, this short story really is that if you can get the water going for industry, the economic value is tenfold what it is for the other, every, everything else. So that's, that's, it's all gonna come together. But working together, I think, is our first step.
Terry, since I have you here, the expert on this, I hear the word thrown out water call here and there. How, like, how close are we to a water call? How does that even, I mean, I, I just don't want the words to be thrown out and then they don't have any meaning, right? So can you explain that a little bit further?
Well, I, I can't say how close you are to a water call. It, you know, a, really, any water right holder who feels like they're being injured by a, you know, a senior water right holder who's being injured by somebody with a junior water right can make a call. Whether that call is successful or not is hard to say. So for, you know, an example is A and B Irrigation District, which is over by Rupert. They, they both pump Snake River water, and they have a, a large area that's served by wells. And it was developed by the Bureau of Reclamation back in the fifties. And they made a water call against the other groundwater use. And they made a water call against the other groundwater users because their water levels were declining. And, and, you know, they fought, fought it out for a year or two and, and the state determined that they weren't being injured enough, that their water levels had declined twenty, thirty feet, and that, that wasn't enough. But, you know, in other cases, you know, the concern I see around on the Mountain Home Plateau is, is water levels declining out of the productive part of the aquifer, getting down from these gravels that are, you know, and the, the bottom of the basalt into firegrain sediments at depths. And at some point, you know, the, the deeper wells are going to be less and less productive and, and, you know, somebody's going to say is enough's enough. You know, and that, that could happen next year, could never happen, who knows?
Thank you.
Could we obtain copies of not just this presentation, but any, any other reports and documentation? Terry, I've seen a handful of yours in the past. We brought a couple of points forward based on the discussion with the Mountain Home Irrigation District support. Do you have any other documentation that can help support us in the knowledge of terminology, historics, that kind of thing that you could share?
Yeah, certainly. You know, the, the big one is that two thousand seventeen report that we did for the county and the Water Resource Board. And I, I certainly can give you a link to that, it's on the Water Resource Board website. That's, that's a pretty good one. I mean, not because we did it, but because it's just, I mean, it kind of lays it all out.
I, I have that one, I can distribute it to them there.
That's a pretty good one. And then, as Terry mentioned, this, the USGS will be coming out with a report anytime now that, that is kind of the hydrologic framework or hydrogeologic framework and the, and the, the the water budget for the, for this area. And that's going to be very enlightening too, because we made a, you know, pretty rough guesstimate that forty thousand acre feet being the deficit out of about eighty-five thousand acre feet being pumped. But, but the USGS will be cut, will have a much more refined number, I believe, coming out of that study. And, you know, who knows, it might be twenty-five, it might be fifty. It's going to be somewhere in that area.
And then the economic study I mentioned should be done any day and we'll share that with you guys.
Thank you both, true.
Thanks. Okay, appreciate you. Thanks, Dylan, Terry.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Run down to action item presentation by Elmore County SNF. And Daniel said that they are not coming tonight, so we will run down to final comments. Councilwoman Wirkel?
Yeah, are we, do you know if we're having a meeting with P and Z next week? Because I saw that email out.
I think Tip was trying to get everyone, if they were rocking and rolling, and then Brenda was supposed to get her people. Do you know, Chris, by chance? I'll, I'll send out an email tomorrow and make sure.
I, it's just next week, so it's coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilman Brennan?
Question on item three. Were, were these the same folks that presented in the three minutes?
No.
And then they just chose not to?
No, the, what was her name?
So I received a phone call today from Beverly, who was going to do the presentation. She said that she hadn't heard from her, from the board if she could speak on, on the board's behalf. So she asked to, she said that she wouldn't be here to do the presentation, but that some of the, some of the other members of the group were going to come and do the
Three minutes.
Talk during the three minutes, so.
Is Beverly the one that was here last time? And kind of got reprimanded by the board for not, for speaking out at, you know, for the board without their permission?
I, I, I'm not sure who was at the last meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay. That's what it sounded like to me, I guess I was trying to figure it out.
Councilman Harjo. On that note, purely for housekeeping, I'll make a motion to table non-action item presentation by Elmore County SNF until date uncertain.
Ben, motioned and second any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for the question, Councilwoman Garvey. Councilman Brennan? Councilwoman Wirkel? Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Okay. About comments?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
On Thursday, there, I just mentioned, um, on Thursday, there's a, the annual meeting of Water District one sixty-one and I, the last several years, I've acted as the representative of the city. I'm not able to attend that meeting. Would anybody like to go in my place? It's not a requirement, like you don't have to be there, but.
Where's that?
It'll be at Chris Alzola's office. I don't have the physical address, I can get it.
Is it time? I can go if, if, what time is it?
You say it's the nineteenth?
No, it's Thursday, um.
Thursday the twelfth.
Oh, man.
It's the twelfth, it's Thursday, or this week?
Yeah. I'll probably have to get you the time, rather than making you wait for my, trying to find the right email.
I was just going to say, let me text Chris.
Any other council want to go?
In all likelihood, I can probably make that.
Mayor?
Okay.
Mayor?
Chris?
Yeah, I would just want to throw one thing out, I know it's a big hot topic in the community right now. We did a measurement on our wastewater treatment plant. Currently, we are, we have enough storage to get us to the first of April, which is when our permit allows us to start land applications with crop. We actually have a forty-two million gallon cushion beyond April first, so I just want to put everybody at ease. This year, we're sitting really well. We can start land applications first of March without crop, so we, we basically have a, a month and a half window there. Additionally, we saw sixteen thousand, or sixteen million gallons of evaporation from our ponds in November, and we anticipate we'll see twenty million, which is not included in that in December. So we're in a really good place right now.
Fantastic. For clarification, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Sixteen million gallons of evaporation?
Evaporation.
Not, not like settling it or whatever you were?
It's, it's mostly through wind, but it is evaporation that's going out into the.
That surprised me with the temperatures and everything.
We saw more than that last year. Last year in November, we saw eighteen million. Last year in December, we saw twenty, which is why I'm saying we expect we'll see the same this year.
Wow.
It's a lot, yeah.
We're a very windy place.
Yes, we are.
Hate to look near it.
Okay. Well, i- if I don't see some of you, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Other than that, anything else for the council? All right, meeting adjourned, see you in twenty twenty-five.